Hold on. Okay, I'll pull it up right here then. I am in September, August, when I get back for my ride. Hey, well. So we're just gonna do it like we did last night. These zones aren't very big, it'll go quick. It'll avoid any confusion. Sorry.
Welcome, everyone, thank you for being here. Tonight's June 5th, 2018, Lamore City Council. This is our regular meeting. So at this time, if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation by Minister Kimberly Nelson. Thank you.
Father God, we come before you, Lord Jesus, and we pray, Father God, for your hand, Lord Jesus, to move upon our leaders here, Lord Jesus. That you would guide them, and that you would give them wisdom, Lord God, and help them, Lord God, to direct the way that you want this city to go. Father God, I ask for unity. Father God, amongst our leaders, Lord God, they are different people with different opinions, but, Father God, in you, they would think and they would do with one mind, with your mind. I pray, Father God, for our city. I ask you, Lord God, for your protection. I ask you, Father God, that you would rally around this city, Lord God, and you would protect the citizens. I pray for the police department, that as they are out, Lord God, protecting and serving our people, Lord God, that you would protect them. I pray, Father God, that you would use them as your hands and your feet, that you would use this council as your hands and your feet, that you would use the people that you have strategically placed in our city, Father God, in the fire department, the ambulance, Father God, those in leadership in our city, that you would use them as your hands and your feet. I pray, Father God, for peace amongst this panel. And I ask you, Lord, that you would cause them to have your heart, because they love this city, as do we. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rope?
Councilmember Blair?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Chedister?
Here.
Mayor Madrabel?
Here. Thank you. All right, at this time is the opportunity for council to approve the agenda as it written. Is there any additions and/or deletions that you would like to see made?
I would like to pull from the consent calendar, item 3-4 and 3-5, please.
Okay, we'll do that when we get to the consent calendar. But as it sits right now, is, do we have any changes? Okay, thank you. We'll leave it as is, and then we'll pull that item when we get to consent calendar. And there is nothing to report from closed session. We had two items that we discussed, there's nothing to report at this time. So at this time, we'll do public comment. This is a time reserved for members of the audience to address city council items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each. So I have one card from Ms. Amy Ward from the Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, everyone. I am here today to, for two reasons. The first is to remind everyone that we have our Rock in the Arbor Summer Concert Series, the four Fridays left in June. Festivity starts at 6:00, band takes the stage at 7:00, and the event goes until about 10:30. They are out at the Arbor, near our offices, in between our offices and the cinemas. And I'm also here to thank city staff and our city council. Our last Rock in the Arbor, or our first Rock in the Arbor of the season, last Friday, was probably one of the largest crowds that I've ever seen at a Rock in the Arbor. It was pretty incredible. But it could not have been done if it wasn't for the help of some of our city staff. The morning of the event, I came to my office and realized that city staff were there. Erin was there trimming the trees, checking the electricals, going above and beyond to ensure that the day of the event went off well, and that all of our equipment worked well. The night of the event, we had some issues with some lightings, and they were quick to solve that problem. So, thank you for that, thank you for partnering with us, and thank you to Nathan and to Councilman Brown for volunteering at the event. It is always a pleasure to see our city engaged at our events. People get the opportunity to engage with you all in a much different light, and I think that it does help change the perspective of the people that are attending the event. So, we would like to thank you, you guys. It's made a huge difference. And as we go into, Nathan and I both are celebrating our one year in our roles coming up this week. I'd like to think that we've made some very significant advances in this year. So I appreciate the support, and I hope you guys will join us next Friday, or this Friday, and the next four. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have a second card, Ms. Tiffany Flores of the Chamber as well.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Flores. I am the new Events Coordinator for the Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to introduce myself today to all of you. I have met a few of you. I am so excited to be an addition to the city, to the Chamber. I've lived here for 23 years, and I'm ready to give back to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Don't have to put in a card, we recommend you do, but if there's not one up here, we still let you speak.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilman. I was here for the study session, and I just want to bring some things to light where maybe some people may not understand. One of the things I heard Mr. Brown, Councilman Brown, talk about was the seniors. Well, you know, I have a mother that's a senior, and I do know for a fact that when you pay your house off, you get catapulted into a different tax bracket. So now you're paying taxes higher than you did over the 30, 40 years you took to pay your home off. Now you're talking about a tax that's inclusion into your property tax. It might seem like a small amount. However, when you're on a fixed income, and you already have to pay extra in income taxes, that can hurt the pocketbook as well. Also, on property owners, we were property owners for many years. If a tax came down to us, and we say, for example, we owned three or four properties, well, that tax went to... Or it could be one, you can say it's an apartment complex. That tax is gonna go to each and every individual in that complex. So if the rent is $800, the mandate, the state mandate, is 10%. That they cannot exceed that. So if it's only $20 in the tax increase, however, they're gonna maximize it to that full 10%. That 10% is $80. So now rent just went from $800 to $880. So, yes, that could have been someone that's low-income in that home. So that's gonna affect them either way. You know, we're in a situation, understandably, that no matter which way we go, we're gonna have to do a tax increase. But I'm for the theory of everyone paying their fair share. I just want you guys to understand that as a member of this community, I'm into paying fair share, because I'm gonna spend more than the person that's low-income. But I'm gonna pay that tax, too. I also protest the state, because I go out to the palace and get my gas, because it's cheaper. So, either way, we're all gonna have to pitch in, and I just want you guys to take those things in consideration before you go after just the property tax.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will move to... We have no ceremonial presentation, Department and City Manager reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm the only reporter out tonight. So, a couple of things already came out in our session, but went down to ICSC, spent a couple days down there. Met with 30 different developers, restaurants, businesses, had some good conversations, have a lot of follow-up emails going back and forth. We did have one meeting with a developer and members from West Hills College and the Navy Base, and we're continuing to follow up on some of those leads. So, some good things coming out of the ICSC. It was a good learning experience for me. Councilmember Brown asked me to rate it from a 1 to a 10. I originally told him, I think I did about a 7, but now that I've had time to absorb it, I think it was probably more like a 5 or 6. Big learning curve, but now we know what to expect next year. That being said, and then also, I'd like to point out that we've had, some of our department heads have taken advantage of some state drought relief workers, and you're gonna see some people in town working in the LLMDs, help clean up that. That is service in addition to what the city's providing. That is not costing the taxpayers of Lamore New Money to, for the betterment of our communities. You will see a group of individuals downtown, doing a full sweep of downtown within the next week, and we're trying to get another individual that will basically man downtown on a full-time basis throughout the summer months to keep it looking, keep it looking good. So, I'd just like to thank the department heads for taking advantage of that and stretching the dollar a little further. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment real quick to your Public Works employees. I actually talked to a couple of them on Hanford-Amona Road, I think about two weeks ago, and I wanted to say what a great job they were doing. I know they were sweating, it was pretty hot out there. I asked if they were doing okay, if they needed water or anything, and they, I just wanted to point out that they had gone through a really large section, and it looked really nice. And I had a couple of community members actually point out that the drive to the freeway on Hanford-Amona Road, that it was nicer for them. So I just wanted to commend the employees as well, not just directors, for the great hard work that they're doing. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for, that's it, all right. We'll go ahead and go to consent calendar. Ms. Blair, you asked one to be removed, which one is it?
3-4 and 3-5, please, for discussion.
3-4 and 3-5, are there any others? To be, no? Okay, so, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, except for 3-4 and 3-5 at this time?
Make a motion to approve consent calendar, with the exception of 3-4 and 3-5, as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Brown, and a second by Mr. Chedister, to approve the consent calendar as written, except for 3-4 and 3-5. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that consent calendar is passed. So we will now pull item 3-4. That is approval of bid award for high school lift station upgrade.
Yeah, if you guys wanna come with me to page 28 on the packet, that's where I'll be looking at for this one. And this is where we see, I just wanted to point this out as we're going forward, as our contracts continue to go forward. I'm not against, by the way, these agenda items. I'm just simply pointing them out, because I think it's really important that the community is aware. We had an original budget for the proposed lift station, and the current, it was, the budget was $36,000, and we're now having an increase, a proposed increase of $100,000 to the new cost of $136,000, and it's reallocation of funds in order to expedite the high school sewer lift station project, which I support. I just wanted to point out, we had originally anticipated $36,000, and it jumped up to $136,000. And I just wanted to ask why there was such a large jump? Because I don't understand that, so maybe I'm just misunderstanding something.
Which page are you on?
I'm on page 28.
On the spreadsheet section?
Of the agenda packet?
The Budget Amendment Form.
Yeah, Budget Amendment Form, yeah. Because a big jump, $100,000, $136,000, from originally thinking $36,000.
I don't have that machine running, but to explain the need for the work at the high school lift station, there's two chopper pumps that are failing. Our guys are having to go to that lift station twice a week now, which makes them go into a confined space, you know, more often than they need to. They physically have to go down and remove the existing chopper pumps to unclog them, because they're stuck in rotation. So, our guys are just putting a lot of time and effort, and the only way to solve that issue, and to make it safe, as safe as it can be, is to replace these chopper pumps and the pertinent equipment that goes along with them.
I absolutely support and agree that it's essential that we're safe out there, and our employees are safe out there. I simply wanted to know why we had a budget suggestion of $36,000, and it's actually going to cost $136,000. And I'm just curious to know why that occurred.
I believe that, and John's not here to, but what I'm assuming is that there was some minor work that they were hoping to plug along for this year, but it actually came to fruition sooner than anticipated. So, what has been done is that there is, there was sludge removal at our pond, work that is gonna be sacrificed this year in order to take care of the work at the high school lift station. But I believe what the problem was is that additional equipment failed that we did not anticipate.
So it was for the purchase of new equipment is why it costs $100,000 more? Okay, that answers the question. I just wanted to, that was a big jump.
Replacing the equipment that's there, but making it better. These are chopper, these are better quality chopper pumps that actually, you know, grind the rags and debris that go in there before it goes into the sewer system. So, but our guys have been spending a lot of overtime, a lot of hours in that lift station.
I understand. So I just wanted to point that out, because as we're, we're obviously all talking about tightening our belts with the budget, and these sort of discrepancies make it very difficult for budget planning. So, I just wanted to bring that up. And I hope that doesn't happen.
Are these enterprise funds?
Yes.
It's not general fund?
No, it's enterprise.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Any other?
I'll just stay up here, Frank, you get one more?
I had, yeah, the other question I had, do you want me to go ahead and bring it up?
So we're still on 3-4?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve 3-4.
Oh yeah, we need public comment on this. Is there anybody that wants to speak on this item? Seeing none, okay, we'll come back.
I'll make a motion to approve item 3-4.
All right, motion by Mr. Chedister?
Second, go ahead.
Second by Mr. Brown. Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion is passed, thank you. So we'll go to item 3-5, which is Approval Budget Amendment for Public Works Professional Contract Services.
Right, and if you wanna go with me to page 40 on our agenda packet, it's another Budget Amendment Form on page 40. And so, again, it was just a question. We had a proposed budget increase of $105,000, so another $100,000 increase of budget that we hadn't anticipated before. And I just wanted a clarification of why that occurred.
So each year, as we do our budget, we kind of look into our crystal ball as to what projects we may have for that fiscal year. So we'll, and not having control on developer schedule, you know, we may say, well, we think we're gonna get, you know, two subdivisions this year. Arco may start, or they may not. This year, we had a large quantity of work that occurred. We had five subdivisions. We had some preliminary engineering for Granville Homes. We had the Arco Gas Station, we had Dollar General, we had the Pijony Facility, and also we had the two, I think they're 20,000 square foot buildings out at Enterprise, that all require, you know, plan, plan review, and inspection services. Also, there's been requirements as far as reviewing, like their landscaping. So if there's a park in the subdivision, we have to send that to a landscape architect to review it, to make sure that it meets the Wallow requirements for energy efficiency. So, a lot, you know, we also pay for video inspection. So after all of the utilities are in the ground, we will send a video down the sewer line to sure that we have no, you know, roll gaskets or any dips in the line. So, all these services are incurred for each of those developments. But each of these developments are also paid for themselves. So, we actually recoup that money with the agreement. So based on their engineer estimate, we come up with a calculation to get back all of our costs associated with our services. So, I guess the best explanation is just the, you know, just the additional projects that occurred this fiscal year. They were just underestimated.
We just, we estimate it $50,000, and it's actually now $105,000 more, so it's going to be $155,000. And again, it's a significant jump from the estimation. And again, I worry about those sorts of jumps occurring a lot in our budget.
Yeah, so...
The page you were looking at, I think you said...
I was on page 40, or I think it started at page 39.
Page 40 is the Budget Amendment. Page 41 is the Amendment to the Revenues. So we increased the revenues $105,000, which offsets the Budget Amendment of $105,000. So actually, it's not any increase.
Net zero.
It's no additional funds, correct?
So, the services that we are providing...
People are basically paying for.
We went through quite an exercise a couple of years ago about making sure that the services we provide are paid for.
Correct, yes.
So we did increase our fees, so in this case, it's a net zero.
Correct.
And those monies come from impact fees, correct?
No, those...
The master user fees?
Master user fees or impact?
So, in the master user fee, there is a table in there for the public works plan check and inspection fees. There's fees for...
Okay, yeah.
So, yeah, so they come out of that, they come out of that table. So, yeah, they do, you know, pay their own way, but we, you know, we've actually zeroed out currently, so we have not...
So this is a good thing, actually?
Yeah, no, it's a good thing, yes.
Because we have more people coming in when we're doing things.
Yeah, no, personally, it's, yeah.
Again, I'm not against either one of these things that I pulled. It was more for clarification, because in both instances, we've underestimated what our actual costs will be. And I hope going forward, when we look at our budgets, we don't continue to underestimate what we're going to need to do. That's all, because those are big jumps, $100,000, $100,000 here and there. So, that's all, thank you.
Well, I think in this case, it's kind of difficult to know exactly which developers are gonna decide to come to the city. I'm sure you do the best you can historically.
Yeah, just like, right now, we, you know, we know Lennar's starting, so we're gonna, we're gonna consider Lennar across, you know, Hanford-Amona Road. We're gonna, we're gonna consider that project. We'll guess on whether, you know, we get any development out by West Hills, but we'll put some money in there, in case we do, hopefully we do. You know, we're just kind of looking in a crystal ball, you know, trying to predict our year's events, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring you back to council for a vote.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item 3-5.
Second.
So there's a motion by Ms. Blair, and a second by Mr. Brown. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, we'll move on to public hearings, section 4. Just to let you know, this is gonna take a while. We've got six public hearings, and then we gotta count votes that, there's votes that have been sent in that we have to count tonight. So it's gonna take a while, just please be patient with us. So the first one, the first one's an ordinance. Okay, first one is just an ordinance, that is item... Ms. Spear? Okay, yeah, first reading, Amendment to Voting District Boundaries to Include Annex Property Ordinance 2018-04. Ms. Spear?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's not quite time for LLMD Fund just yet. So, back in...
Well then hurry up.
Back in March of 2018, council went through a lengthy process that adopted an ordinance moving to voting districts. Following that, in April, the city annexed a portion, a 40-acre parcel north of Hanford-Amona. And at that time, we did not assign a voting district to that particular piece of property. And so we have to come back to with an ordinance now to encompass that 40-acre parcel into one of the voting districts. It currently only has two dwellings and approximately four votes, but we have to assign it somewhere. So it's been vetted by the city attorney's office and by city staff, and the recommendation, based on the map, is to include it in voting district E. I believe it's in, there's a, I believe there's a map in your packet. I'm sorry, I don't have it to display. So this evening, we're asking for council to open the first reading of the ordinance to put this particular 40 acres into voting district E and open a public hearing, and we'll come back, hopefully, in two weeks with the second reading.
Is there any discussion?
I'm all for it, that's my district, so yay.
Okay, so, no discussion, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this one. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, close it, close the public hearing, come back for a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve item 4-1, as proposed.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion by Mr. Chedister, and a second by Ms. Blair. Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion is passed, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move to LLMD Fund, Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number 1 Zone. This is Resolution 2018-27. It's Order Increase of Assessment of Annual Levy for Fiscal Year 1819. Ms. Byersdorff?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. On April 18th, 2017, staff was directed by council to proceed with balloting and prop 218 hearings of underfunded LLMD zones to increase their assessment. Tonight, we're having five public hearings, and we'll be tallying the votes of the ballots. Frank, Nacho, Chris, and myself went to neighborhoods and had informational meetings regarding these increases. The meetings were held at 6:30 on Wednesday evenings, and one meeting was held on Thursday. Information regarding these meetings were posted on Facebook, posted on the city website, they ran on the CMC lighted sign, and were posted on the solar boards at the entrance of the subdivisions for the week prior. Tonight, when the ballots are counted, if there are 50% plus one of the ballots that vote yes, then the increase passes. If not, it fails. These increases also include a 3% inflator. 3% will be added to the maximum assessment each year. Even though the maximum will increase 3%, that does not mean the assessment to the owner will increase. The current fees for all of these districts, or zones, sorry, started in 1997. They have not had an inflator in place, and when the fee, from when the fee started, and they have not been balloted or increased since 1997. Zone 1 and 5 votes were tallied at the May 15 council meeting, and they both failed. Any zones that fail will have a reduced level of service for the upcoming fiscal years. Many have already seen a reduction in service as we have worked to remain within budget this year. We have just begun to have Proteus workers help with the LLMDs. Those are the workers that Nathan had mentioned earlier. Proteus has grant money that pays the workers, and it is no cost to the city. This helps with staff hours in the zones. However, we are limited with vehicles and equipment to have the staff work on several zones at once. Proteus workers are only available when there is money, so if the grant money runs out, we will no longer have the workers. Just something to keep in mind, if you see the level of service is reduced in any of the zones. This time, I have, there should have been some handouts handed to everyone. And this is just to kind of help you, for each zone, it's a sheet from the engineer's estimate. So I have circled on the first page what the different costs are. Then on the bottom, it shows what part of the properties are included in the assessment. And then on the backside, I have the assessments, the increase, the budget, and then the map, which is also on the side here. So the first one we have is Zone 6, which is located south of Bush, at Bush and Barcelona. The current assessment is $15.78 a year, and the proposed assessment is $32 a year. The current assessment has a budget of $1,988.28 annually. The proposed budget would increase that to $4,032. Annually, the proposed budget would increase that to four thousand thirty-two dollars. I think that's about it.
Yeah, so, is there, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this point. Let's see, see how that goes. Anyone who wants to speak on this item, please come forward. For zone six, this is only for zone six at this time.
My question is, uh, she said that everyone was notified. I want to know how each area was notified because I never received a notification. Uh, and I just talked with Dr. Croon, she never received a notification, so how, um, how can you vote on something when there was no notification given?
Do you live in this zone?
I, I cannot clearly see from this map.
If you don't mind, what's your address?
Uh, eleven fifty Belinda.
Eleven fifty Belinda. It's not on there.
This zone is, is, um, southeast of town.
Okay.
Behind the bigger end.
Okay, so then, my next question will be, is all, will all zones be discussed tonight?
Only the ones that were proposing an, an increase in the fees.
Okay.
So, not all zones, and, um, their number, we, we call them off by, um, by zone, uh, LLMD, uh, district, and then the zone number. And we'll identify exactly where they are on this map.
Okay. It would just be a lot easier for me to be able to see, but thank you.
Okay. So, is there any other public comment?
I, I just wanted to echo that, that's really important, I think, for transparency.
Public comment, please. No public hearing? Okay, so we'll close it, bring it back for discussion now. Ms. Blair?
I would just suggest, um, the maps, these are great, by the way.
Yeah.
If we can maybe add these to our website and make it really clear, and not just, um, the individual maps like these, but maybe have a master one that very clearly, this is a little, um, hard to see, so that people in the city could easily say, hey, I live in that zone right there. Uh, maybe we could add that to our website too, or on our Facebook page, to make it very clear for our residents where they live, what zone they're in. I, I would imagine, if you polled residents, most people don't know which zone they're in, and that would help.
Any other discussion? No? Okay, so I guess we'll just wait for the vote on this. So, we move on to the next one.
Would now be a good time to bring up a suggestion?
All right, we're gonna go count it, so, yeah.
How much time you need, Janie?
Janie's could do it, not that many.
All right.
I did want to mention one other thing that a, a voter, a resident, had, had mentioned to me. Um, he actually was somebody that had participated in one of his zone meetings. I, forgive me, I can't remember which zone he said he was in, but he attended, and he said, I think, um, it was this initial page, he commented that it kind of jolted him and a lot of other people at first because they thought the increase was going to be, um, at first, this whole amount, the, the number, or at worst, uh, maybe like the forty dollars or something, instead of really brightly pointing out, it's gonna be, you know, in one of these zones, I think it was like a dollar more a month or something like that. Um, and, yeah, see, like, for example, this one says it's a dollar forty-eight more a month. That, that's a lot easier for somebody to look at, just right off the bat and say, okay, yeah, I could afford that or I couldn't, versus if they see something like, we're going to need, um, seventeen seventy-eight, maybe they think that's a month instead of a year, or they see a, a number like five thousand and they think that that's somehow going to be, um, given in their area. So, I just wanted to point out, that was brought to my attention, that it freaked a lot of people out, the way that it was written. So, maybe, um, if we want more success in the future, we make it very, very clear what per month the cost is, because it's a lot, most people budget per month. And that's what they're, that's what they're gonna eyeball right away. Just for clarity.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, city clerk, city clerk's tabulation of the ballots, uh, yeses were six hundred and forty dollars, nos were two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, so there was not a majority protest, so you could approve the increase assessment.
Okay, we can approve the resolution. All right, so bring it back to council for discussion. Would we like to approve this resolution or not?
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve, and I wanted to make it very clear that the increase is a dollar thirty-five more a month.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's just point out.
Second?
Okay, there's a second, so there's a, a motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Brown to approve the resolution. Wait.
Does the clerk ask us to wait for all?
Who? Didn't pass.
Did not pass.
Thank goodness.
I retract that motion.
Uh-huh.
Can anybody...
So, it failed.
Over a dollar more.
Dollar a month.
Correction. The nos were six hundred and forty dollars, the yeses were two hundred and eighty-eight, so there is a majority protest.
Okay. Thank you, so we don't even have to vote on this one. Thank you. All right, let's move to item four dash three. This is resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight. This is for LLMD number one, zone seven, ordering increase of assessment of annual levy for fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Ms. Byersdorff.
Zone seven is located north of Silverado. It's kind of on the corner of Silverado and Nineteenth Avenue. There's several zones over there. I know it's very confusing with all the zones, and everyone in the city is not necessarily in a zone. There is, I think, on community development on the website, if you go to the GIS and go to the second page of the GIS, there is LLMD PFMD. And if you open that up and plug in your address, it'll take you to where you might be, and it would show what the assessment is. So, there is something out there, it's, you know, might be a little hard to get to, but...
Are there some areas that are neither an LMD or a PFMD, or do all residents fall into one or the other?
Correct, no. Like Belinda is not in any sort of district. So, there's several that are not in districts.
Okay.
Okay, so this is zone seven. Their current assessment is seventy-eight dollars and twenty-two cents a year. The proposed assessment is ninety-six dollars. The current budget is four thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-six cents, and the proposed budget would increase it to five thousand eighty-eight dollars.
And for clarification, that would equal per resident or per household, it would be a dollar forty-eight a month, correct?
Yes.
That's what the increase is, a dollar forty-eight.
See, oh, that's a scary number at first, five thousand, and then you narrow it down to...
And it does, um, when it go, when the ballot goes out, I think it goes out annual because it goes on the property tax, which is an annual. But that is why we tried to break it down to say it, it isn't as much as it looks like it is, but...
She shows the, uh, monthly and then the year.
What does the ballot say? How does it...
It says the annual, because that's how it goes on the assessors.
So, in this case, it would be...
Ninety-six.
It would say ninety-six dollars.
Ninety-six dollars.
And I know some people were confused, thinking that was...
From seventy-eight dollars a year, roughly, to ninety-six dollars a year.
To ninety-six, yes. And some people thought that was an additional amount too, so...
On top of seventy-eight. Some people thought it was seventy-eight plus.
Yeah, it's only seventeen, yeah.
Yeah. So, just adding clarity.
That could be confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would go a long way in the future.
I guess there's a legal way that they have to be written? Is that right, a format that we have to use?
But we can educate our, our citizens in however we want, right? I mean, we can make an outreach, uh, effort in that regard if we would like. I, for one, would like to, to see an outreach effort, maybe on, uh, social media to start with, that wouldn't cost very much, and then go from there.
And we did, when we put it on Facebook, it, it showed some of the breakdowns.
Thank you.
So, when you were doing this outreach, what was your impression of, how many people showed up?
Well, it depended on the zone. Sometimes we had a couple people, sometimes we had twenty people.
And...
It kind of varied.
Did you feel like they understood how much per month, or were they asking questions like that, or...
Yes, I think they understood, but I think many of them, like on the last one, where it was fifteen dollars to thirty-two dollars, I think they were just seeing it as doubling, where, you know, you kind of say it's fifteen dollars more a year. I mean, yes, I understand it's doubling, but, you know, that isn't necessarily a lot of money, so... I mean, it might be a lot of money to somebody, so you don't want to offend anybody.
No.
The person who came up to me came up after the fact. They said they had gone to the meeting the night prior and then spoke with me the next day, so I'm not sure the temperature of that room, but it, they came to me, you know, and they were saying this was confusing, and so I, I did get a little worried, um, that our citizens were confused, those meetings.
Okay, we ready for the vote?
I think we're in the public hearing.
Oh, I'm getting confused here. Sorry about that. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter?
Good evening again. What I'm getting is, and I'm, I'm hearing Ms. Blair and, um, you know, just in general, when you give out two different numbers, I'm calculating, but that's what I do. But if you have someone that's sitting there and they're not understanding the concepts, how can they apply what they're learning to what their real life looks like? So, we, we have to be a lot more clear on what we're saying, because, you know, someone sitting there going, okay, okay, it went from fifteen dollars, thirty-two dollars, okay, that's doubled, but, you know, really, it's not, because there, there's words in there that's saying annual, monthly.
Mm-hmm.
And if they're not catching just those basic words, it could be very confusing. So, you know, maybe we should, when we're, when we're proposing and talking to the general public, that we use layman terms and not fast talk. I know that, you know, the person that's doing this and talking, talking to the individuals or the community, they see it all day long, they speak the language all day long, but that's like, you know, me walking in and I speak English and I go talk to a Chinese person. I'm expecting them to understand what I'm saying, and I, this is my language, I can speak very fast. So, we have to learn to maybe slow it down, be more cognitive of what we're saying, then the, then you'll have less confusion. That, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would just to speak on this item? Seeing none, closes the public hearing. Do we have the ballots counted? We do? Okay.
This is for zone seven, we had thirteen ballots cast. The nos were eight hundred and sixty-four dollars, the yeses three hundred and eighty-four dollars. There is a majority protest.
Majority protest, so it does not pass. Thank you. We will now move to item four dash four. This is resolution eighteen twenty-nine, LMD number one, zone nine, order increase of assessment of annual levy for fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Ms. Byersdorff? Think we get in the picture.
We, we figured. Okay, zone nine is north of Hanford-Armona, kind of down over by the canal.
Zone nine.
This one, the current assessment is forty-six dollars and sixty-two cents a year. The proposed assessment is seventy-seven dollars a year, which is an increase of thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents a year. The current budget is six thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and eight cents, and the proposed budget is ten thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone that likes, which wishes to speak on this item, this is zone number nine.
Why nine?
Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. Is there any discussion while we wait for the vote count?
I think, just trying to clarify for the audience exactly where it is, because it's a little hard to see.
It's the very easterly end of Hanford-Armona Road, almost near the canal.
Fine Court, Mission Drive.
So, it's north, north of Hanford-Armona Road up against the canal.
Cousins Drive.
Yeah, Mission Drive is like, yeah.
Cinnamon Drive.
Yeah. I'm beginning to sense a pattern.
I may at this time bring up a point for council members, when, when it, when and if we make a motion, that if we make the motion to approve the item number and the resolution and its number, I think that'd be easier for the clerk when she hears it back the next day and is making notes, because, just to say we approve, I think we should be more clear, approve the, the agenda number and the resolution number, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
That's a good point. Thank you.
If we get to vote for any, may not.
I'm starting to sense a, a pattern here.
Is that yours?
Once again, um, for this zone, there were thirty-one ballots cast. The total amount, uh, no was...
The total amount no was $1,925. The yeses were $462. There is a majority protest in this zone.
Thank you. So we will move on to, this is item 4-5, Resolution 2018-30, Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District, Number 1, Zone 10. It's Byers Dorff.
Zone 10 is located south of Hanford Armona Road and east of 19 and 1/2. It's kind of where Welcome Way is. For that one, the current assessment is $125.76 a year. The proposed assessment is $177 per year with an increase of $51.24 a year. The current budget is $18,989.76, and the proposed budget would be $26,727.
Open the public hearing on this one?
Good evening. William Scoggins, 1700 Chimney Way. Turn my ballot in first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying the dollar amount. It was 125, and now it would be 177. However, the notice does not say that. Here I thought we had a 10% increase and I was freaking out. I was like, what are these guys doing? So it's less than that and I'm happy. The only other item that I ask is that you examine the inflationary mechanism and you lower it to the Consumer Price Index, 3%. Our economy has not been doing that well over the past 10 years. I think we've had 20% COLA increases over a 10-year period. And if you move forward with this, that would have been a 30% increase. So try and keep it down to what retirees can afford, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ed Fickner. I reside in Zone 10. I moved here in 1997 for work and moved to the area because of it being a brand-new community. It was a small town and I watched it really grow into, you know, something great. Over the last few years, I've watched it slowly diminish, probably for the reasons that we're talking about tonight, because of the budget offsets. And I just, I think it's unfortunate that we have let it go that way. The community has always been about local, 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 and all I see is out-of-town people coming in and doing the services. And so if they're increasing their fees that are not in line with what we should be, you know, that's probably where some of this oversight has not been followed through with what the increases have been. So I hope that regardless of how the outcome is, that we can kind of come together and form maybe some committees in our neighborhoods that we can come up with plans that would be more palatable to the communities. And perhaps we can move into a comment for everybody to provide what their opinions would be in moving forward. So, thank you.
So just a question, point of question for you. So did you understand the way the ballot came out, how much it was going to mean? And how do you look at it? Do you look at it from an annual perspective? Do you look at it monthly?
It's an annual deal and it's not a hardship for me and my wife, but I can see in several other people that live in the area, it could be. I definitely know for my wife and myself, it was misunderstood. However, I showed up to the neighborhood community comment and it was clarified, so thank you very much for coming out and providing that service. I still feel that there should be some other avenues that we can go through rather than just an exact assessment to each individual in that community. Because I, originally before this, I thought, I understood that it was, we paid our property taxes for the city, not for our individual, because we don't have HOAs, correct? This kind of comes back to an HOA. And it's, so I did not know that when I first purchased the home. But again, that's on me for not informing myself and researching that. So a little bit of a surprise. I think there were some misunderstandings that maybe the council at that time had with the developer in putting in that hillside. That's been another large reason for having to increase our fees. It's a larger area that needs to be maintained rather than just the grass on the entryway. I think that could have been, and that was argued back in the beginning of the development. And the council wanted, I think, to have the development coming through, so they allowed that to be done in that case. And it was like one of the only developments that has that type of landscaping around it. So, but again, going back to your specific question, I didn't, but it was further explained and I appreciate having had that opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, go ahead and close the public hearing and see what the vote comes out.
Would now be okay time to ask a question? Just, I'm curious what the hillside is that he's referring to that has an additional cost to homeowners? Where is that at? That there's a different kind of landscaping that's costing more? I'm not aware of that, so.
There's a long cinnamon. There's a dirt worm. It's probably six feet tall by probably 20 feet wide. And it goes along the entire frontage of the subdivision and around the corner.
So where is that on cinnamon? I'm just curious.
Right there. The red area.
19 and 1/2, okay. That's cinnamon right there.
I'm not sure if that was, Matt, I'm not sure with the reason, but I'm not sure if that was to replace maybe a block wall or some, substitute something. But that's what was approved back in the day.
You can actually stand on that dirt mound and look into everybody's backyard.
Is it possible for us as a city entity? I know you said this was done by the developer, but can we like zero-scape the area and make it lower cost for the community in that area if we zero-scaped it?
It pretty much is zero-scape, because there's just dirt there at this point in a lot of the areas, so.
So it's not costing a lot more then, is it?
No, it's to actually get it maintained, to get sprinklers back on it and get some nice growth, to actually make it look decent, was part of the assessment. So basically, what this assessment says is that that zone is underfunded to the tune of roughly $8,000 a year. So to do any improvements above what we've been doing right now, there's absolutely no money to do it, unless we subsidize it with general fund dollars at the direction of council.
I was just making a suggestion of a way to lower that cost there. Thank you.
Or it may pass. We'll see.
I had another question. I keep asking. It actually is for you. When, the question about the CPI index, is there a reason, and for the 218, is there like a legal reason why we have an inflator that the way that we do as opposed to a CPI or a chain CPI inflator? Is that like a legal reason or was our choice?
Do you want the results first or the question first?
Go ahead and ask the question again.
Yes, different agencies use different rates of, you know, for calculating the inflationary adjustments. Commonly CPI has been used for most agencies, but over the recent years, they've gone to a flat percentage that mimics what we've seen in the average CPI over the last 20 years. Right now, yours is 3.5% for the Landscape and Lighting District. That's a fixed inflator. Actually, in this area, inflation this year, I think, is going to be 3.79% for the annual inflation. So it's actually less than what CPI is going to be. True, over the last, since the bubble, you know, the housing bubble, CPI's been really low. It's been in the twos and ones. But there were days when it was 14 and 15%. So, I mean, the idea though was partly to, what we have found historically over the last several years, what tends to make people vote no is that CPI inflator being a total unknown, that they can't figure out how much their maximum assessment would go up. With a fixed number, you can pretty much calculate, year after year, what this maximum assessment could go to. So a lot of agencies have moved to doing a flat percentage, either 3 or 3.5%.
So back to my question though, is, so legally though, we could do either or?
Yes, in terms of, you could have the inflator tied to pretty much anything you want it to be, as long as the ballot, you know, as long as when you ballot the property owners, it's stated on the ballot what the inflator is going to be.
That's, thank you, that's very informative. Might I suggest then, in the future, that as we're looking again at this topic going forward, perhaps we come up with a different sort of inflator number that's more transparent or easier to calculate on, for our citizens? Because I would imagine most citizens can't just say, oh, this is what it's going to calculate to if they didn't have this. Is there a way that we could make it to where a citizen could like go to the website, say this is how much it costs to maintain your zone? Here's what we think the anticipated cost will be, you know, each month? And like actually show that somehow?
And you could do that if you keep the fixed inflator. If you go to a CPI inflator, there's no way to predict what that would be.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, ballot results for Zone 10. There were 30 ballots, well, actually, there were 31 ballots cast, one ballot which they signed but didn't vote either yes or no, so that one doesn't count. So there were 30 valid ballots. The noes are $3,363. The yeses $1,947. Again, there is a majority protest in this zone.
Okay, thank you. So we will now move on to the last one. This is Agenda Item 4-6. It's Resolution 2018-31, Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District, Number 1, Zone 11.
Zone 11 is located at Vine and Cabrillo. So it is north of Iona and west of Vine Street. The current assessment for this location is $53.32. The proposed assessment is $94 a year with an increase of $40.68 a year. The current budget is $1,919.52, and the proposed budget is $3,384.
We will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Zone Number 11. Seeing none, close the public hearing and we will wait for the vote count. Looks like there's not as many in this one.
The ballot tabulation for Zone Number 11 is, there were five ballots cast. $94, yes. $376, no. Again, there's a majority protest.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to new business. We have one item. This is Item 5-1, Agreement with Lemoore Volunteer Fire Department Association, Incorporated for Ancillary Services and Resolution 2018-32 to rescind Resolution 2018-05. Mr. Olson. 10 seconds. Okay, good evening, mayor and council members. So I'm very happy to bring this item to council tonight. It's been a little ride. I think the chief could agree, but we've had some things we needed to dot some i's and cross some t's between the city and our volunteer fire department. And I'm happy to say that we've got a contract that I think accomplishes what we needed to do. I'd like to thank Chief German and his staff, especially Brahm Rossiter, spent a lot of time getting this thing together. We basically have a contract that'll pay our volunteers their association for ancillary services to the tune of $70,000 a year, paid out quarterly. And then in addition to that, we will be getting them their, getting caught up for this fiscal year. I believe it's 75,000 and some change. Sorry, yeah, $75,835, which, you know, we had passed earlier, passed a resolution to, on the per-call basis per individual. The leadership from the fire department or from the association had asked that we pay that to the association instead. So we went ahead and arranged and have that in here. But I just have to say, we did not go out to every individual to verify that. We're going off leadership and so far, nobody's come forward with any complaints or concerns to me about that. So with that, I'd like to say that this is the last little tidbit of information that we need to put all this fire department, city stuff to bed. I would like to say for the record that I think there's been some misinformation out there in the public. I would like to say that we value everything that volunteers do for us. They're providing great service to this community and if my house catches on fire, I'm glad they're there. Not once was it staff's intent to replace this agency via contract or any other means. And I want people to know that, because I think there's some misnomers out there that think maybe we don't value you guys as an entity. That could be further from the truth. I applaud you guys for what you do, the sacrifice you make, and I'm glad we're done. So we need to open it up to the floor for comment or anything? Or I just need approval to approve this contract so we can move forward and get these gentlemen, some of the back pay they got coming to them?
Do any of them want to say anything?
You do have to open it up for public comment.
Public comment. Go ahead and open for public comment.
Chad Billingsley, current president of Lemoore Volunteer Fire Department. I just wondered if all the council members had a moment to actually read the contract?
Yes.
But.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Evening. Brahm Rossiter with Lemoore Fire. And when this is all done, I'm going to be glad it's over too. We just kind of want to make a brief statement. It's not three pages and it's not going to take three minutes, but we'd just like to, again, inform the public on some of our side, some of those missed things that Nathan was talking about, just kind of clear they are up a little bit. Sorry, we were training, ran in here.
Take your time.
The last nine months for the fire department, they've been fairly frustrating and disappointing. The lack of communication between the city council and the city manager caused two simple requests by the fire department, a lot of undue stress. Our voting community deserves to hear this statement. It was pretty simple. First, we wanted to stay volunteers. We didn't want to be employees. Second, we wanted all the money coming from the city to come to the fire department and not the individuals. No individual has ever received a payment from the city and we just want to kind of keep that in place. That's what we were fighting for. Nathan and the legal council refused our request into, looking into them further. We repeatedly were told that these requests were illegal. W9s were thrown in our face and the funding to the fire department stopped in December of 2017. Smartly, we refused to sign the W9s. Sadly to say, it took a simple five-minute Google search and it quickly revealed the definition of what a volunteer is and we fit it exactly. The documentation by the IRS and the Social Security Administration was quickly provided to the city and its council members. Several weeks later, the city council and its legal council agreed we were volunteers. The last issue we were talking, which we're discussing tonight, was on payment to the fire department. The city refused to pay the fire department and we refused to sign the W9s. We were at standstill. In December of 2017, the idea of adjusting our line items on the budget and paying the nonprofit was brought to the city and quickly shot down with statements of it being illegal. We discovered that the fire department's nonprofit status... We discovered that the fire department's nonprofit status had expired and we quickly reestablished the nonprofit in February of 2018. Still, meeting after meeting, it was stated it was illegal to give public funds to a nonprofit and we still refused to sign the W9s. No research by the city had taken place for our request to have the payment go directly to the fire department, the nonprofit. Sadly, again, a simple Google search quickly provided documentation stating under certain circumstances, giving public funds to a nonprofit was perfectly legal. This document was given to Nathan and the city back in March of 2018. This document was also given to the fire department, our legal council, to make sure that it was still valid and still current and still legal. The line item budget adjustment has been on the table since December of 2017. Paying the fire department nonprofit has been on the table since March of 2018. It's now June 2018 and we finally have an agreement upon a solution for paying the fire department. The voice of the fire department had to poke and prod the city manager, the city council for this agreement. We are beyond frustrated. The city council, city manager, and city legal council has taken time away from our families, our careers, and our dedicated training hours. The solution has been on the table for months but fell upon deaf ears. Your actions have created animosity in our department, as with the men we respect in the surrounding county fire departments. The fire department and this community deserve professional treatment from the city council and the city manager. The fire department has almost been around for 100 years and has supported the city and all of its proud committee members. The fire department is ready to move forward. A professional relationship is what we deserve and will help mend our relationship with this city council and the city manager. City council members and city managers will come and go. However, the Lamoore Volunteer Fire Department will always be here for the community of Lamoore. The community members have showed their support for the fire department and we want to take a moment to thank them all for their support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, come back to council.
I did actually have questions about the contract that I wanted, just since there's representatives here and leadership. And it was actually Item C, it was one of them, I think. I'll find it. It's the one that the, for how they do their hires and that the city can override that. And I just wanted clarification that, from my understanding of the contract, it's only if there's like, you know, not following a, like a federal stipulation law that the city obviously would have oversee that. And, but also if there was somebody recommended. There was also other reasons that the city could get involved and I just want to make sure that the, the association was fine with that, so.
Yes, we've, Bruce German, fire chief for the Lamoore. We've looked at it several times, we've gone through it several times, we're okay with it. It's been explained to us a couple of times.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's clear. And then the other question had to do with Item 4-8, on the other provisions of the independent contractor. And just a clarification again, because that had been a bit of a point of confusion or question, especially with the W9s. And so, understanding this contract, this, they will not have to pay their own individual liability. Is that correct? Like as if they were, you know, going onto a fire?
No, so as, as long as the, as long as the fire, as long as when the volunteers are responding to medical aid, traffic accidents and/or fire and acting on behalf as volunteers for the city of Lamoore, they're covered. This contract has nothing to do with them providing the emergency services for the city. This is strictly a contract for their association to provide ancillary services. If they're on city property and city equipment, they're still covered under the city's liability. So, so yeah, this, just as long as they're on city property or in city trucks, they're covered.
Okay, and please, no, I'm not opposed to the contract. I just wanted to make sure some of the areas that I knew had been brought up as points of contention were clear and that everybody was okay.
Yeah, they have been taken care of and we're satisfied with it.
That's all, just want to make sure, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'm glad, I'm glad we've got an agreement. If there's no other comments, I'll make the motion to approve item 5-1.
Okay, so there's a motion by, as proposed. So there's a motion by Mr. Chetister. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Brown. Mr. Chetister.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Before I vote, I just wanted to apologize on behalf of the city one last time. You guys deserved better and I hope moving forward, we all agree to help more. So I vote aye, thank you.
I vote aye as well. Thank you guys for all you do, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Heather?
No, she's, she's out this evening. Oh, well, I'll bring a check to you in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Before you guys leave, can you hang on one second? I want to mention one thing for you guys, if you don't mind.
We just need to go to council request reports?
Well, it's in my council request report, so I thought you guys could hang on for just one more second.
Go ahead, Ms. Blair, for council reports.
For my council report, I would like to suggest, as noted before, our Facebook page had been a point of contention and it was on a loop or a reel. Perhaps we can change that reel, the special occasion, since we passed the contract. I'd like to see that updated to, to show some support for firefighters, if we could please do that. And I'd also like to make a recommendation, just as we have had now two different ceremonies to thank our officers, if there's a way that we can have any kind of award ceremony, I know the guys don't like it, I get it. But just even if it's just a proclamation or something simple, to say how much we do appreciate and going forward to sort of turn a new page of appreciation, I'd like to make a recommendation that we, that we present something ceremonial, so. And I know you guys don't like the big parades, but just something, a small appreciation, a token appreciation, please. Can I have consensus for that, please?
That would be fun.
I concur.
Okay, so I'm not sure what that might entail, or maybe you could talk with the chief a little bit, but.
Figure it out.
Something, thank you guys again for your service. And then the, on my council report, the other thing is, we had a citizen, a public comment and I really was concerned, the idea of renters could somehow, just the idea that in our city, I hadn't never thought of that, that their rent could go from, you know, 800 to 880 overnight. And I'm wondering, is there any way that we can protect some of our low-income renters from something like that happening? Even unintentionally, if the city did something? That's a pretty serious consequence to something that we might do. So is there any way we can look into that?
So my understanding of that is that's state law and local laws cannot trump a state law. And I think for Section 8 and different housings, there's probably some different rules in place, but I'm not sure if you can do a 10% on a low-income Section 8 housing. I'd have to look into that.
Is there a way that we can look into that? I'm concerned that something like that could happen in our city and if there's any way that we can protect our citizens from that. And while it's true that local municipalities don't trump state and federal municipalities, we as a city municipality can enact ordinances that protect our citizens above and beyond what the state does. So I would like to see if there's something we can do about that.
So are you talking about rent control?
Or not necessarily rent control, I mean, I don't even know the full situation. Is that even possible to do that to somebody living low income? If it is, what are the, what are the mechanisms that can cause somebody that's rent to go up that much overnight? And is there anything that we can do to prevent? I don't know the answers to that, but that, that was brought up today in conversation and I'm worried about that.
I'd imagine if they qualified for HUD or other things of that nature, there's probably some type of stipulation in there, I don't know, but.
I don't know either.
But, you know, other than that, it's, it's fair market. What I remember from planning commission.
I know they have rent control in San Francisco.
I'm not suggesting rent control.
But I don't know if that's, I guess that must be a city ordinance or something.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that we have more information to understand the situation in the first place, because it may not in fact be the case if you're low-income or whatever. But if it is, then that's a concern I have for citizens in our community. That puts them at risk. And now that I'm aware of that information, I, I would like us to look into that.
We need a consensus, we have consensus on that?
If nothing else, to just find out the preliminary information of, if it's true that a renter could increase that much?
Yeah, if it doesn't cause the city a lot of time and money, I think that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Is that it?
And that is all, thank you.
Mr. Brown.
The only thing I've got, appreciate staff, city manager for all your hard work. Appreciate the fire department. You guys do a heck of a job. I know you guys don't get told that, they're already, most of them's already, I think, everybody's already taken off. Might be a retiree or two years still in the room, but appreciate all your hard work. Police department, thank you for all your hard work. Been kind of tasking lately on you guys. Thank you, thank you, tell your officers, thank you. The only thing I have is, is the, I know we've been looking at it, but the sidewalks in front of the Fox and D on the north, the northwest corner there, in front of the old bank where the Lamoore flower shop used to be. Yeah, you gotta have hiking boots pretty much to go over that area. There's some cones out there right now, but, and I know that the sidewalk area probably belongs to the homeowner, or the building owner, but it's getting to the point, I don't know if we want to close that down or something, that sidewalk, because it's, I saw some people going across there the other day in a wheelchair and, I mean, they were, it was almost all-terrain. And then the, just a suggestion, something to look at. And then the, sorry about the commentary, I shouldn't have said that. That was improper for me to go on with that commentary. Apologize for that. And then on 19th and Cinnamon, that northwest corner, that, there's a section there of, that's missing sidewalk and it's dirt and it's not level. And I did see somebody take a spill there. So, and I won't go into the details, but that needs to be at least leveled out. So you transition from the street to the sidewalk, it's on the northwest corner of 19th and Cinnamon there. They have a kind of, even if it's just dirt, it's some kind of transition. And that's about it, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want consensus for that?
I don't know if we need consensus or I just bringing it up to city manager?
Well, I can comment, the sidewalk out in front of the old flower shop?
Yes, sir.
Is, I know it was being contracted out and we sent a 45-day notice to the property owner to fix that sidewalk or we were going to fix it and levy, levy the building. So that's in process. And then the other property you're talking about on the corner, that's, that's the school district's property and that is the zone for, according to their master plan, the next middle school. So construction's, I don't know when it's going to start, in the next couple of years, but I can contact the school district and ask them if they want to start working on that.
Yeah, because the person I saw, they were in a walker. They were using a walker and they took a dumble. So they got up, they were fine, brushed themselves off, but, you know, please ask, ask them to. And also that, that, that building there, it's on that same corner. I mean, there are a lot of pigeons and stuff on that building. We all know we're having problems there, but, you know, request that, you know, I know you guys are probably doing everything you're, impossible in your arsenal, but I guess I'm asking them to, if they could, do whatever they can do to clean that up and, and make that look a little bit better, because that is our downtown and, you know, a lot of, and I know you got people coming in, going to help clean that up a little bit, but.
The county condemned that building and they've removed, I believe it was six tons of pigeon poop out of the second story of that building. And it's been boarded up to eradicate that. So property owners are aware.
Yeah, I've.
Going through the process, it's not, it's not a quick, easy process, so I got to tell you.
And I was in that flower shop probably one week before it closed. It's pretty, it was pretty bad shape, but it's sad, it's sad. It's a beautiful old building, so. No, thank you for all your hard work though on that. I'd like to thank the police department for their hard work and thank you, Amy, in the chamber for all you've done. And thank you, Nathan, and the fire department for coming to a conclusion finally. And that's all I have.
Me too. Glad to have that behind us. Just want to make sure that everyone understands that there was never, ever any intent for us to get rid of the fire department. I guess that's the easiest way to say it. There was an article in the paper the other day that implied that. Not, didn't imply it, it said it directly. So I apologize for any misunderstanding on our part to the, to the fire department, but I am glad it's behind us. It's definitely clears the air for us and we have a very safe city because of the Lamoore Volunteer Fire Department, so I'm very happy about that. Other thing, I did mention last meeting about the Communities of Excellence, Baldridge project that I'm on in my other life as, when I, working for Adventist Health. That's going to be June 15th. I think they've probably been in communication with you. So I would highly encourage as many staff members to go to that. I know the county's sending some people and the city of Hanford is as well, so. That's June 15th at noon, it's going to be at the hospital. And one other item, I'd like to, it's been brought to my attention by a particular person about some comments that we discussed a few council meetings ago regarding some social media. And in my discussions, I read a particular post from another council member's social media site. And in reading that, I read it exactly the way it was. Apparently, there's been people that have taken offense to me reading that particular word. I'm not going to say it anymore. It starts with N. I meant no harm, I meant no disrespect, but apparently some people were offended by that. So I'm here, I want to say I apologize for that. I did it for reasons that I guess I, I could go and try to explain now, but it's not really worth the explanation. I just think that I, I know, looking back now, I should not have used that, so I apologize for that. And that's it? Thank you.